Good morning. I'm going to call the Dakota County Board of Commissioners to order. Today is May 3, 2022, and I'll ask that the clerks please call their own.
Commissioner Atkins?
Here.
Commissioner Workman?
Commissioner Slavitt?
Here.
Commissioner Gaylord?
Here.
Commissioner Hayman Rowland?
Here.
Commissioner Halverson?
Here.
Commissioner Holberg?
Here.
Thank you. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you and good morning again. We move first to audience, and this is a point in time where we ask anyone if they have an item that's not on the agenda, an item that's on the consent agenda, to please come forward. We do limit comments to five minutes. Is there anyone that would like to address the board?
Oh, there's the clipboard.
All right. If not, we will... Oops, I'm sorry. Oh, we do have some. Nobody wanted to stand up. Thomas Newman, did you want to speak? All right.
I think he's coming up.
He's coming up.
It's on the agenda. If it's on the agenda, we'll talk about it at later in the meeting.
Yeah, it's on the agenda.
Right. This is just citizens' comments. Okay, I have a whole list of people here. If you've signed up and would like to speak to the board now, would be the time. All right. All right. Come on up.
Good morning, Commissioners. Josh Lorigan. Hopefully, you guys remember me, sure, a couple board meetings ago. I won't take five minutes, I promise. I'm here because I want to talk about the correctional deputies in the jail. Again, obviously, since I represent them. We're coming up on Corrections Week. I think it's either this week or...
This week.
And so, something that is of a pressing need is we're coming up on contract negotiations, and our contract is up at the end of the year. Typically, we don't sit down until towards the end of the year, September, October. Unfortunately, this is not a typical year. There's a lot of counties around us, Washington, Hennepin, Anoka, Ramsey, they are already settled for 2023 and 2024. And the past two years have been an extremely taxing time for correctional deputies. They have had to work every single day in person. Prior to COVID-19, speaking from personal experience, we had to worry about hepatitis A, B, C. We didn't have to worry about bringing something that was unknown to many of us home, to our families. And a lot of these counties are settling their contracts, and with the workforce being the way it is, back when I started in 2002, you could be going up against 100 other people for one position. Now, there's 100 positions for one person. And when we are battling other employers for a very small workforce, people have to see the light at the end of that tunnel. And right now, we are short-staffed. We have that continuous revolving door. People come in, people go. We hire four, six leave. We hire six, 12 leave. So, people need to see that that light is at the end of the tunnel, and they need to see what they're working for. And like I said, when you have all these other counties settling their contracts, we need to get in front of the... We need to get in front of the eight ball instead of being behind it. So, I'm asking that you guys do whatever you need to do on your end to start having those conversations about what it looks like for 2023 and 2024, and so that we can get down and sit at that table so the workforce in Dakota County doesn't continue to look elsewhere to go, because we want to keep the hard-working women and men that we do have in the jail working there, because corrections and law enforcement is one place you cannot have a short-staffed workforce. So, again, I'm just here to urge you guys to do what you need to do. I don't envy you. Trust me, you don't want to do what I have to do either. So, that's all I got for you. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Heidi Flodeen. I live at 13844 Sunset Lake Drive in Burnsville. I represent a growing group of Dakota County residents that have concerns about our election processes. Did you know when our elections are certified by the county and then by the state, a large percentage, as high as 96.4% of ballots, of all ballots, in person as well as absentee or mail-in, are not yet connected to their corresponding legal voter registration and/or legal voter history? Yes, we are certifying elections before we have taken the basic step of matching the ballots to the voters who cast those ballots. This would not be a problem if, when the step is finally taken, there was always a consistent one-to-one match, so that the number of ballots cast always exactly equals the number of legal resident registered voters who actually voted. But that is not the case. Anyone who can pay the $46 fee can request a detailed voter history file from the Office of the Secretaries of State. As Minnesota Statute 201.171 states, "Within six weeks after every election, the county auditor shall post the voting history of every person who voted in the election." It seems reasonable to conclude that if you wait until after the six weeks is completed and then request a detailed voter history, you will receive the name of every person who voted in the most recent election. It also seems reasonable to conclude that the total number of names or people who voted will exactly equal the total number of ballots cast, but that is also not the case. Since the 2020 election, our group has requested and paid for several detailed voter histories from the OSS, and the result we find is consistent but unexpected. We consistently find that the number of people who voted in the election is always significantly less, 0.95% or more, than the number of ballots cast. Another way to say this is the number of ballots cast is always significantly more than the number of voters who are documented in the voter history. I have seen it to be as high as 10.2%. Based on detailed voter histories, I have seen that Dakota County is unable to connect as much as 10.2% of all ballots cast to a corresponding voter history. Why? Why are there always more ballots than documented voters? Worse still, nothing is done with these unconnected ballots. They are just left unconnected. Like spirits separated from their body, they just hang out as ghosts in the system. It is hard to believe the people responsible, both at the county and the Office of the Secretary of State, have missed these ghostly, yet glaring indicators of potential fraud, yet no one is talking about them, and it seems nothing is being done. Why is there a persistent and large number of ballots that remain unconnected to a corresponding voter registration or voter history? Isn't the most obvious answer that they are not connected, because they cannot be, because they do not represent actual voters? We need to have integrity restored to our elections, and we need to have basic math restored to our elections. We should never have more ballots than we have voters. To that end, our group would like to present two additional resolutions, that one that indirectly and one that directly tries to address this issue of the ghost ballots.
Good morning, Commissioners. We would like you to receive the following resolution and add it to the next board meeting for discussion. Whereas Minnesota Statute 204(c).07 Challengers subdivision four states, "The election judges shall permit challengers appointed pursuant to this section to be present in a polling place during hours of voting and to remain there until the votes are counted and the results declared." And whereas Minnesota Administration Rule 8210.3000, Mail Balloting, Subparagraph 11 states, "Challengers appointed under Minnesota Statutes Section 204(c).07 may be present while the election judges are examining and accepting or rejecting the returned envelopes. Challengers must be made and determined as provided in Minnesota Statutes Section 204(c).13 subdivision six. And whereas Minnesota Statute 206.86, Counting Electronic Voting System Results subdivision three states, "Proceedings at the counting center are open to the public." And whereas the 2020 Absentee Voting Administration Guide, Section 10.0 states, "Challengers can view meetings of the absentee ballot board. The meetings scheduled of the absentee ballot board should be posted." And whereas the 2020 Mail Voting Guide, page 18, states, "Counting of ballots must be open for public observation. And therefore, be it resolved that Dakota County Board of Commissioners hereby shall permit challengers, including the public, to be present in any and all counting centers and polling places during hours of voting and at any and all meetings of absentee ballot boards to observe the election process while ballots are processed, votes are counted, and as pre-camus outcomes are determined and finalized. The meetings scheduled of absentee ballot board shall be posted on the Dakota County website. Challengers must be allowed to effectively perform their function by being able to clearly read the actual information on absentee ballots' outer envelope and to fully and completely see and observe all aspects of the process from beginning to end." Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. We would like you to receive the following resolution and add it to the next board meeting for discussion.
Could you introduce yourself, please, for the record?
What's that?
Could you introduce yourself and where you...
Oh, I'm sorry. Jim Scanlon. I'm from South St. Paul, Minnesota. We would like you to receive the following resolution and add it to the next board meeting for discussion. Whereas Minnesota Statute 204(c).07 Challengers subdivision four states, "The election judges shall permit challengers appointed pursuant to this section to be present in a polling place during hours of voting and to remain there until the votes are counted and the results declared." And whereas Minnesota Administration Rule 8210.3000, Mail Balloting, Subparagraph 11 states, "Challengers appointed under Minnesota Statutes Section 204(c).07 may be present while the election judges are examining and accepting or rejecting the returned envelopes. Challengers must be made and determined as provided in Minnesota Statutes Section 204(c).13 subdivision six. And whereas Minnesota Statute 206.86, Counting Electronic Voting System Results subdivision three states, "Proceedings at the counting center are open to the public." And whereas the 2020 Absentee Voting Administration Guide, Section 10.0 states, "Challengers can view meetings of the absentee ballot board. The meetings scheduled of the absentee ballot board should be posted." And whereas the 2020 Mail Voting Guide, page 18, states, "Counting of ballots must be open for public observation. And therefore, be it resolved that Dakota County Board of Commissioners hereby shall permit challengers, including the public, to be present in any and all counting centers and polling places during hours of voting and at any and all meetings of absentee ballot boards to observe the election process while ballots are processed, votes are counted, and as pre-camus outcomes are determined and finalized. The meetings scheduled of absentee ballot board shall be posted on the Dakota County website. Challengers must be allowed to effectively perform their function by being able to clearly read the actual information on absentee ballots' outer envelope and to fully and completely see and observe all aspects of the process from beginning to end." Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Could you identify yourself for the record?
Yes, ma'am. Dave Bestor, and I'm from Farmington, or Lakeville, or...
One of those who don't know where you're from? Somewhere in Dakota County.
Somewhere in Dakota County. So, this is a... We're going to read this resolution here. It's a lot of dry...
Is it the same resolution?
No, it continues.
Okay.
Yeah, it's five pages long, but we're going to continue reading it. It's very personal to us.
Do you want to just submit it to us, or did you want to have to read it?
We want to read it. We want to read it for public, so the public can hear it. So, it's very personal to us, so it's... We want a fair election, so...
So do we.
Good. Awesome. "We ask that the Dakota County Board of Commissioners please review the following resolution and add it to the agenda of the next full board meeting. Whereas, due to the unprecedented expansion of the use of absentee and mail-in ballots that began with the 2020 general election and the accompanying prevalence of the suspicion or appearance, if not the actual fact, that absentee and mail-in ballots that cannot be connected to illegal voter registration and therefore to illegal voter history because they do not represent actual legal voters are being counted and included in the Dakota County election totals and therefore are inappropriately affecting Dakota County election outcomes. And whereas the requirement of the absentee ballot boards to, quote, "must immediately," unquote, "connect the absentee and mail-in ballots to their corresponding legal voter registration" is clearly defined and established in the Minnesota Statute 203b.121 subdivision three and Minnesota Statute 204b.45 and supported in the 2020 Absentee Voting Administration Guide, Section 13.0 through 13.2. And whereas the requirement of the county auditor and municipal clerk to record accepted absentee and mail-in ballots in the roster and the Office of the Secretary of State's OSS statewide voter registration system, SVRS, no later than the start of voting on Election Day, is clearly defined and established in Minnesota Statute 203b.121 subdivision three and Minnesota Statute 204b.45 and supported in the 2020 Absentee Voting Administration Guide, Section 15.2.1. And whereas the 2020 Absentee Voting Administration Guide, Section 15.2.1 states, "When administrators use SVRS to manage absentee voting, a simple button click will mark the post-voting history, PHV, roster A, B, for all voters on the roster with an accepted absentee ballot. And whereas Minnesota Statute 203.171 states, "Within six weeks after every election, the county auditor shall post the voting history for every person who voted in the election," and thereby allows the posting to the PVH module to occur any time within the six weeks. And whereas the OSS SVRS and PVH module are intended to provide a central and public data source for the review of all who voted in a given election, as well as the review of the election outcomes, and is primary means for the public and candidates to access the information. And whereas absentee mail-in and mail-in ballots that cannot be connected to legal voter registration and therefore to illegal voter history only become perceptible after the OSS SVRS and PVH module postings are completed. And whereas, due to the computerization posting to the PVH module is a simple button click, therefore, in no way requires waiting until the end of the six-week posting period, defined in Minnesota Statute 201.171. And whereas unnecessarily delaying the posting to the SVRS and PVH module until the end of the six weeks fosters a suspicion and appearance, if not actually creating the opportunity...
Mr. Bestor, your time is almost up, so are you nearing the end of your resolution?
No, I'll just stop wherever, whenever it ends.
All right, we'll let you know.
Okay. For absentee mail-in ballots that cannot be connected to legal voter registration, therefore, the legal voter history, because they do not represent actual legal voters, to be counted and included in the Dakota County election total.
Mr. Bestor, your time is up.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Could you introduce yourself? I assume you're continuing the resolution?
I'm Lyndon Nara. I'm from Rosemont, Minnesota, and this is a very personal issue for me. I... Before I start, I just want to say that I'm one of the not connected to a voter registry in the 2020 election.
How do you know that?
I actually did check to make sure on Midway Swamp Watch that... It was actually my husband and I. We both mailed our ballots at the Rosemont City Hall, and we weren't counted. And furthermore, when I volunteered to do some caucus work in February, they sent me the precinct people in my precinct that I could call, and I wasn't even on the list. So, where did I go from 2020 to 2022? So, that's my question to you all.
Great. Have you addressed that issue to our election staff so that they can look it up?
Well, I haven't looked it up. In fact, my husband passed away in February, so I went down there to make sure he is off the records, and I am now on the record. But where did I go? And where did he go?
Well, if you want to, you can talk with our election staff, and maybe they can help you understand that.
I will.
That's if you would like to.
Okay. Whereas unnecessarily delaying the posters to the CVRS and the PVH module until the end of the six weeks disenfranchise both legal registered voters and candidates by preventing them from being able to determine whether they are absentee and mail-in ballots that cannot be connected to illegal voter registration and therefore to illegal voter history in time to contest the election as provided for in Minnesota Stat 209.02 and Minnesota Stat 209.021. And therefore, be it resolved that in the interest of providing increased transparency to remove even the suspicion or appearance that absentee and mail-in ballots that cannot be connected to illegal voter registration and therefore to illegal voter history are being counted and included in Dakota County election totals. The Dakota County Board of Commissioners hereby establishes that no election in Dakota County will be certified by anyone in Dakota County until the following conditions are met. Determined by the independent forensic audit shall overturn and replace any original outcome and become the official outcome of that election. Once the above conditions have been fully met and the election is certified by the Dakota County Auditor or the Dakota County Elections Department staff, the following must be completed no less than 24 hours before the start of the state campus on the third Tuesday following the election as defined and established in Minnesota Stat 204c.33. One, all absentee and mail-in ballots that are connected to their corresponding legal voter registration and accepted must be posted to their corresponding voter history in the PVH module. Two, all election day ballots cast must be connected to their corresponding voter registration in the SVRS and posted to the PVH module. If at any time the Dakota County Auditor or Dakota County Elections Department staff find they are unable to post ballots to their corresponding legal voter registration in the SVRS and/or to their corresponding legal voter history in the PVH module and the total number of ballots that cannot be posted to their corresponding legal voter registration in the SVRS and/or to their corresponding legal voter history in the PVH module exceeds one-half or 1% of the total ballots cast in that election, then the Dakota County Auditor or Dakota County Elections Department staff must immediately determine the district and precinct for each and every ballot that cannot be posted to a corresponding legal voter registration and/or corresponding legal voter history. If it is found that the ballots that cannot be posted represent one district and/or one precinct and only have the potential of affecting the outcomes of elections isolated to that same one district and/or one precinct, then the Dakota County Auditor or the Dakota County Elections Department staff must immediately and publicly notify that district or precinct of the discrepancy and must immediately commence a publicly founded recount that excludes each and every ballot that could not be posted to a corresponding legal voter registration in the SVRS and/or a corresponding legal voter history in the PVH module. If the results of the recount are a new outcome for that election, the outcome determined by the recount shall overturn and replace any original outcome and become the...
Lyndon, your time is up.
Okay, sorry.
Does anyone want to finish the resolution? All right. Any other election-related comments? Commissioner Holberg, you wanted to speak on this.
I did, and I... You know what? I... There's a lot of passion around this issue. It's very detailed. I just want to assure individuals that are coming that I think everybody shares the same goal, a fair, accurate, lawful, transparent elections. I have certainly learned some new things. We've had a number of meetings with staff. In fact, some things are already changing. I'm working with our communications staff to find an easier way for public notices around testing of equipment and different activities that we do here, so that can be easily accessed by the public. It is my intent as Chair of the GGP meeting to boil down these concerns and bring a variety of issues to the General Government Committee. We're hoping for the June meeting, but we need to make sure that we have clearly kind of identified the scope of concerns and then allow time for our staff to do their homework and prepare. I know they're working on surveying all the cities to find out about availability of election judges. Do they have enough? Do we need to do more? How they do their ballot board. So, certain counties were identified by these citizens as doing it in a way they're more comfortable, so we're researching those counties and how they do their operations. So, we have our own homework to do at the county, and in order to prepare a meaningful discussion of the board of those issues that can be addressed prior to the 2022 election, we won't be able to get to all the issues at GGP, but we're going to prioritize those that the board does have authority over and that could be addressed prior to the next election cycle. So, that's kind of an update where we're at, and I feel like we're making progress. I hope the individuals that have been coming to the board feel that as well. Certainly, if anybody has any questions or concerns, let me know.
Anyone else on any other citizens' comments? All right. If not, we will move to approval of the agenda.
Move approval, Madam Chair.
Moved by Commissioner Hayman Rowland.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Atkins. See no discussion, quick, we'll call their own.
Commissioner Slavitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaylord?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayman Rowland?
Yes.
Commissioner Halverson?
Yes.
Commissioner Holberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Move then to the consent agenda. This includes minutes from April 19, 2022, items 6.1 through 10.1, and I will note that item 8.1 is a proclamation of a Provider Appreciation Day in Dakota is a proclamation of a provider appreciation day in Dakota County due May sixth, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Madam Chair, may I make the motion? Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
A motion and a second, seeing no discussion, quick, we'll call it off.
Commissioner Gaylord?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayman Rowland?
Yes.
Commissioner Halverson?
Yes.
Commissioner Holberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Slavik?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes. That takes us down to our regular agenda, and we begin with item eleven point one, this is out of public service and revenue administration, it's imposition of a civil penalty for the first violation of one of our ordinances regulating licensing and the sale of malt liquor, and Teresa Mitchell is here to make this presentation, good morning.
Thank you, Madam Chair, good morning, Commissioners as well. So the item before you is the imposition of a civil penalty for violation of County Ordinance one oh one by Cannon Golf Club Incorporated. So under statutes and our ordinance, Dakota County is authorized to license and regulate the sale and consumption of liquor in the unincorporated townships of the county. The ordinance permits compliance checks, which our Sheriff's Office conducts regularly. In the last three years, they've conducted about fifty-seven compliance checks, of which eight did not pass that check. So on October ninth, twenty twenty-one, Dakota County Sheriff's Office conducted one of these checks at the Cannon Golf Club, at which time an employee did sell alcohol to a minor. Charges were filed by our Attorney's Office, the employee pled guilty and the criminal proceedings were completed February twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-two. So the county ordinance requires that civil sanctions be imposed on the licensee for selling liquor to a minor as well. There's a range of penalties in our ordinance relating to the number of violations committed within the prior twenty-four months of the violation under consideration. Now Cannon Golf Club has not had violations within twenty-four months prior to this that we're talking about today, however, this is the second violation in twenty-six months and the third violation in approximately four years or forty-nine months. The dates of those are in the RBA. So the ordinance defines civil penalties for a first violation, which this is considered in twenty-four months, to include a fine of five hundred dollars, suspension, suspension of the license for up to sixty days or revocation of that license, or any combination of these penalties. So it's staff's recommendation in concert with those guidelines and the ordinance and in consideration that there has been two violations in twenty-six months and three in forty-nine months, that the, the civil penalty would be to impose a five hundred dollar fine and a five day suspension of Cannon Golf Club's liquor license. The suspend, the suspension dates proposed in the resolution in your packet are Thursday, August fourth through Monday, August eighth. It has come to our attention that this timeframe would likely have unintended consequences to other organizations, nonprofit organizations that would be using the facility on Thursday, August fourth, as well as Monday, August eighth. So to avoid unintended consequences to these organizations, there's an alternative five day window in August that I just bring to your attention, and the details of the civil penalty is up to the discretion of the board, but those dates in August that would not have an impact on other organizations would be August, Saturday, August twelfth to Wednesday, August twenty-fourth. I'm happy to stand for any questions, and I do understand members of the organization are here as well.
All right, any questions of Teresa?
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Do you still need it?
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair, I just want to reiterate, if you would reiterate, those would be the times that, go ahead and just, and state that again because I was a little distracted.
Okay, sure. So the ordinance in your packet includes dates that, that conflict with two other organizational events at the, at the facility. So the alternative dates that I'm bringing forward for your information and consideration would be Saturday, August twentieth to Wednesday, August twenty-fourth, which is a five day in the month of August.
So if we, if we do the resolution, we would need to do an amendment to the dates?
If you choose to.
Okay. Because of this conflict. Thank you, Madam Chair, and Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. Teresa, Miss, Mrs. Mitchell, Ms. Mitchell, that's kind of fun, I was thinking about something my dad used to say in his, in my childhood. Anyway, I just want to make sure that those times between August twentieth and twenty-fourth, there are no, no organizations like veterans organizations that would be at the facility, so that would be, there would be no unintended consequences for those organizations.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hayman Rowland, I've been in communication with the organization, and they have shared the dates with me that would be in use of the facility by nonprofits, and that is the window that had no dates, and that, that was just recent conversation with the, with the facility manager.
And Madam Chair, may I just have a follow-up? I want to thank you, Ms. Mitchell, because I thought you, when you, when I spoke with you, that you had a real understanding of the organizations that would have a negative impact, and I really appreciate you coming up with a solution that is a consequence, because this is really important, that there is consequence for this, we want to protect our youth from, you know, being sold alcohol, and we want to protect them. And so I understand the organization understands that as well, but I really appreciate that you sought to find a consequence that would not hurt the organizations that they so capably handle and are able to help raise money for, like those veterans organizations. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, we have two people that wanted to talk, and if you still need to.
Madam Chair?
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, I had a quick question.
Yes.
Can you, do you have the stats, I mean, we're obviously not out there each month, do we have like a pass fail rate, like in the last five years, how many times have they been, I don't know what the right word is, tested or tried, and what percent was a pass or a fail?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Holberg was given this information from our Sheriff's Department, and they conducted fifty-seven compliance checks in twenty nineteen through twenty-one, so three-year timeframe, eight failures during that time, so it's about a fourteen percent fail rate.
But in that, this particular, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, at this particular facility, though?
Oh, this facility, in the, in the last forty-nine months would be three failures.
Out of how many visits?
I don't, I don't have that information.
That's why, that's why I'm kind of looking for the pass fail grade, I mean, I, I don't, I think I only do these like once a year or something, so I guess I'm a little concerned.
Sheriff.
The sheriff's in the back, I don't know if he'd like to weigh in, but, I mean, are we to assume that if in a four-year period of time, they failed three out of four times?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Holberg, we do one a year per license establishment across the county. So I would, if, if, if Ms. Mitchell's saying?
It's a pretty high rate.
There was three failures in forty-nine months, I'll have to do the math, probably three out of five, three out of six?
Three out of four.
Or three out of four. I, I just.
I was being polite.
I know. That, that's what I thought we were gonna hear, given my knowledge of the program, and I'm, I don't know if there's a way to get at that or a change of ordinance, but that, that seems a pretty high failure rate, is, has there ever been any consideration of once somebody's been identified as a bad actor to increase frequency of this program, or?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Holberg, I've been in contact with Mr. Fisher about this issue, he has had some concerns and expressed those to me, I've talked to my staff, and I've talked to Ms. Mitchell about this as well. We want compliance, that's our goal, right? So one thing we thought about doing is sending the letters ahead of time in a two-month, three-month timeframe that, hey, get ready, we're coming, right? There's some philosophical issues with that, some are like.
To me, that seems like an open book test, but I'm just saying, I'm not sure I'd go along with that, but.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Holberg, my wife thought the same when I expressed it to her the other night, so you're not alone. There's that issue, there's the training, we offer training then to staff, and all liquor establishments, you failed, please come in and have your servers go through training with us.
Yeah, I was aware of the training, but that's something to think about, it just seems to me it's a pretty high failure rate for one facility.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair, and, and I agree with you because protection of our, our youth is really important, and I just, I'm curious if they've taken you up on the training, and if they haven't, is that something that needs to happen?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hayman Rowland, from my understanding, they signed up for the training, but were not present.
So Madam Chair, follow-up? Can this board say that in order to, you know, have this solution, which is a fair solution, that they would need to, to do the training and they would need to show that they've done the training? It needs to be recorded.
Maybe I'll direct that to Teresa in the resolution, are we requesting that they participate in, participate in training, not just schedule it?
I, I believe, Madam Chair, I believe that would be up to the discretion of the board to include that in the resolution and part of the penalty, it's not in the framework of the ordinance, but there's nothing that prohibits, that I'm aware of, that you wouldn't be entitled to do that.
All right, thank you. I do want to get to Mr. Newman and Mr. Fisher, if they want to come up and comment.
So in regards to the training, we did do the training last year, it was not available, it was only available through online, which I know that my restaurant manager and several of his employees, I think almost all of them, maybe with the exception of one, did do the training last, last spring. We have changed our ways of doing things over the past several years, before I got there was the first time that we were in, held in non-compliance. After I had arrived, they didn't really have any safeguards to try to stop this. The first non-compliance that happened since I was there, which was three years ago, and there had, it's only been, it's been three, and I know it's been five years for sure, but the first one was in a private outing in which everyone in the outing that was there was of age and had, and then they stuck somebody in there in the middle of a hundred and sixty people that had just come in from playing in a tournament, and all these people were all of age, and it was a, it was actually a South St. Paul School District fundraiser, and they came in in the middle of it, and somebody stuck in the middle, and the girl served somebody, and, and she got caught with that. Now, the next time, that was a private function, and this last time, so just a, just a quick recap, so what happened was, is our, we have a young female that had just graduated college and got her nursing degree, was waiting to start her position at the Mayo Clinic, and she was working in the bar, and we train all, everyone very well as far as, I, we're very adamant about making sure you card everybody anytime that there's a chance, it says even on our, we've, we've carded seventy-year-old people, because there are things on the back of the cards that stipulate if there's alcohol issues, if someone gets served alcohol. So we have everything posted, we have everything, we, we've made a lot of changes in the fact of we will prosecute you if you try to purchase alcohol under the age of twenty-one. We have all these things posted in our clubhouse, and we let everyone know. So this young lady was working one day, they brought a girl in here for their compliance check, she actually, our girl ID'd her, she said, can I see an ID? She took the ID, she checked it, it was kind of a little odd, because if it's an upside down one, obviously they're not twenty-one years old, but she looked at it and she said, well, how, I can't imagine someone being so stupid as to hand somebody a under twenty-one ID, so she's like, well, I better check the date, so she's checking the date, and she saw a different number, she thought she saw that she was twenty-one years old, so she served her beer. Now, she took the ID, she did everything that we trained her to do, she misread a couple of numbers, and because of that, she got charged, okay? So that's how that all transpired. So then I received a letter considering the, the fining of us, that we were planning on getting fined, and that we were going to be possible of having a five-day liquor suspension of our license in August, which is certainly our busiest time of year, as we have many, many outings, we have, we certainly have veterans group that's here, we also have, I think we have four or five other charity fundraiser events during that month, plus that is also our, our mainstay is our time whenever we make money. If you go along with the timeframe that she is recommending, even if it is not sometime that is, when we have one of these outings, I've estimated that we, as a, as a club, we will lose fifteen thousand dollars in revenue, which is actually, it's funny, I added it up, it's a thousand and sixty-nine dollars in taxes that we'll be losing there, that will be towards taxes as well, but for this time period, we're losing an estimated about fifteen thousand dollars, we'll lose a hundred and twelve hours of lost wages to our employees in our place of business, and this is the kind of things that I think are tough for a golf course and a, and a facility to operate whenever we're already fifty thousand dollars behind what we were a year ago due to the weather. I would please ask and, and hope that there would be some kind of possibility that we could serve this as a later time, possibly October or sometime late in September, whenever I know that it won't be as devastating to us, but all I can say is, is, and sum up, if a fifteen thousand dollar loss, a hundred and twelve hours of lost wages for our employees, and a five hundred dollar fine because she misread a number on her ID, and I just ask, does that seem just to you? So I'll let Tom talk.
Thomas Newman, I'm a member at Cannon, I'm a board member at Cannon, and I'm the current president of the Rosemont Beyond the Yellow Ribbon, and we are hosting our third tournament at Cannon, and first year we had thirty-two teams, second year we had thirty-eight teams, because I couldn't turn down two VFW teams at the last minute, this year we're trying to hold it to thirty-six. First year we did this in two thousand twenty, we netted thirty thousand dollars for a one-day event, and a year's planning. Second year, last year, we netted over forty thousand dollars. Those dollars go to support the veterans, their families, and active duty staff in Dakota County, sometimes we sneak into Cottage Grove because they need some help. This, this tournament to us is our lifeblood, if we can't have liquor served on that day, we won't have a tournament the next year, because people that go golfing, they like to drink. I can't drink because I have no concentration, and an extra beer would not make it any better.
Well, I appreciate your consideration for, for moving the, the date, but I, I speak for other, unknowingly, I speak for other organizations that would be hosting an event, many of them are charity events, and they depend on those revenues too, the Boosters, United Way, whatever, so I guess I would agree with, with Brett that if this suspension could be adjusted, modified to a later point in time, so it doesn't present the same consequences, and I don't think we would have a problem going through the, the training session again, but this was a mistake, and it happened, and, and I guess there's no, no one here that's perfect, and I guess this is, is one of those things that shouldn't have happened, it was just a perfect storm, you have a boatload of people in the clubhouse, it's hot, people are thirsty, and I know in, in our case last year, we were, we were crowded, we were extremely crowded, so I appreciate any consideration you could give us, if you give us the benefit of the doubt, I don't think that we have any problem in. If you give us the benefit of the doubt, I don't think that we have any problem in going through additional training. I just appreciate this.
All right, thank you, Tom.
Any questions?
Any questions? Any comments from the board on the item? Or is there?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This may either be sheriff or public service revenue related, but thank you, Mr. Newman, I appreciate your comments, and I think that we're certainly, regardless of what the outcome may be from the board, we certainly don't want to go and have a negative impact on your organization and that. But my question is, I'd like a little more conversation on the best practices, what that actually entails, what it looks like, what that means. So, I don't know if that's under Ms. Mitchell or the Sheriff Leslie or to kind of start, but that's, I want to walk through what the training looks like for a moment. Is that under sheriff or chief deputy? Thank you very much, Mr. Newman.
I guess I can, Madam Chair, Commissioner Slavik, I can start with a little framework about the best practices, and I would then turn to Sheriff Leslie to fill in the training component if that information's available. In the ordinance, there is a program, best practices program, that gives points for meeting certain criteria towards then minimizing any impact or penalties if there is a violation. It obviously supports other public health and important initiatives around the ordinance. But there are certain items such as installation of devices on cash registers that would verify age at every transaction, there are training requirements, a whole slew, I guess, of options that can get an establishment points then, and then they notify public services and revenue of meeting those factors.
So, that, Madam Chair, a follow-up where I was going to go, there, so there's no requirement of a card reader, but it's an option to get you up to a threshold that allows you to be considered a best practice within the field. Is that correct?
That is correct.
We do have a card reader. It doesn't work all the time. So, we do have one, it just is not, for some reason, like we'll try, sometimes it works, sometimes it just, I don't know if that's just a Wi-Fi issue, what the deal is, but once in a while, it doesn't get like the other than that.
So, my story on that is obviously, over the years of dealing with, particularly in my days on the city council, this obviously is an issue there. And in the past, when we've had establishments that have had this problem, that has at least been the saving grace that has really turned around an organization with the card reader. And maybe that happens to be because we have good internet access in this community, but for that reason, that, because I've heard from other businesses that have, are trying to run their operations with very poor broadband throughout there, that it's not quite the same as being in a community in a more, in a city. So, that has been, one, I'm glad to hear that you have it because at least it's working some of the time, but that is, I look at the establishments that have had problems, when they've been able to get that card reader and it works every time and that training, the problem almost goes away. So, I just was, two of my questions were, one, do we require it, and number two, do you have one already? So, I'll hold off a few more questions after, but.
Other questions or comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know how many of us on this board have been part of a compliance check. I have. I worked in a liquor store in college, and so I have had that experience. Proud to say I was successful. I still have my T-shirt for successfully passing my compliance check as a retailer. And the reason that this is important, and the reason that these penalties exist and these laws exist and these trainings exist is because it is an important responsibility anytime that we are serving intoxicating liquors. And we want to keep it out of the hands of minors. We also have a responsibility, all servers have a responsibility to keep it out of the hands of people who are already intoxicated. So, it's a big responsibility when you are serving intoxicating liquors. It's a big part of, as was mentioned, it's a big part of fun and recreation around our communities as well. And so, making sure that we allow it responsibly is really important. And I feel a little bit disappointed that we didn't hear kind of a recognition of the responsibility and the importance of the role that organizations play in keeping intoxicating liquor use safe in our communities. Keep, I mean, because this is about keeping people from driving drunk, and many safety and public health issues arise from serving intoxicating liquors, and that's why we have penalties, and that's why we have training. I am very concerned that what is, what's kind of being minimized is a simple mistake. One of the changes that we made as a state was to change the way our driver's license looked so that it wasn't as difficult for people who are reading driver's license dates to see a minor because the driver's licenses are actually different. They're vertical instead of horizontal for when you're 21. And so, there are actually indicators out there, which to me leads me to believe that more training is necessary for staff and that that needs to be taken extremely seriously. I feel sad that this particular server kind of talked herself out of, you know, having to enforce that and, you know, having an understanding of why the licenses are the way they are. And, you know, I hope that all the servers feel empowered to make those decisions and feel backed up by their management when they do make a decision not to serve somebody because they're carrying a big responsibility. They're responsible for a lot of our fun and hospitality and being good hosts, but they're also responsible for public safety and public health, and I, those are important things to balance. So, I would definitely encourage strongly additional training if we have the ability to compel that as a part of this resolution. I think it's worth discussing and considering because I think the training is good. I actually had been through that too. It's been a few years, but I learned a lot back in my days of being a server, so something to consider.
All right, thank you for that. Another comments? Commissioner Evans?
I'll make the motion that we pass the resolution with the amended date. And if there's interest in requiring the training and that's acceptable to others, I'd be, why don't I, for sake of testing it by motion, I'll include that in the motion, Madam Chair. See if there's a second for it.
I will second. I have a motion a second, but I have a attorney waving his hand, so. Mr. Donnelly.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, looking at your ordinance, the available sanctions are the monetary penalty and then the suspension or any combination thereof. There's not an option built into our ordinance to impose training as a sanction with regards to a violation.
Question to that. So, my question would be, would the applicant be willing to agree to that as part of this resolution? We can't require it.
Well, we're going to train all the time anyways. I mean, we don't.
I was going to say, this one's important enough that we better be able to have it on record, so.
Yeah, we're training all the time. As I talk to the sheriff here, we all want the same thing. We all want compliance. I mean, I'm not trying to get away with anything. We want to do better all the time. We want all of our kids, as we all know right now, we're having a difficult time filling positions. I have just as hard a time trying to find bartenders as I do find help in my shop or, you know, anything like that. So, any of those people that come in, yeah, we do extensive training with them. Now, if, whether it's doing training through them or training through, I know College City Beverage does some training for us as well. So, actually, that's what I might have been thinking about whenever I was telling you that I did the training last year. That was through College City Beverage is who we did it through, which is the, our supplier through Anheuser-Busch. So, those are, those are what, I mean, we do that all the time. It's just a matter of, you know, so we're going to do it. It's not going to be a question of whether we're going to do that or not. Of course we are. But it's just, you know, my thinking was is that I just felt like the penalty was a little too much for what happened in the process. I feel like that our girl made a mistake. She made a mistake by looking at a number wrong. She didn't knock card the person, she didn't say, "Come on in, I'll give it to you." She said, "Please, let me see your ID." She took her ID, she made a mistake, and because she made a mistake, we're paying with, you know, $15,000 worth of lost revenue off the top of our, right off the top as your resolution is going to pass. So, that was my, that was my, that's what I've been upset about. It's, it just, it just doesn't feel right. And I've talked to the, I've talked to the sheriff as well. You know, one of the things that with these compliance checks, and it'll show that I got animated at one point, but I think one of the things is, is that when these guys go around and do their compliance checks, I mean, they're breaking four laws in the state of Minnesota for us to try to break one. That, I understand what they're doing, I understand how that works, but when I've got a 20-year-old girl or a 21-year-old girl, and now all of a sudden she's facing charges for something when she made a mistake reading a license, it's upsetting to me as an employer and as someone that cares about my employees. I don't want them to have to face these things because that's, that is, that's way too much for a 20 or 21-year-old young lady that's just trying to work her way through college or just get out of college to have to deal with. And I feel like that it's, for lack of a better word, it's sneaky, the way that they kind of do things. So, I've had conversations with him about it, but I think for the most part, the big thing is, is that we all want to get along, but as I told him, I want to have a good relationship with the county police too. And there's something wrong whenever any of the county police come near our facility or probably any of the other facilities, I don't want to speak for anyone else. And there's, we don't trust them, we don't, I don't want them to be there, so there's something wrong with it whenever our relationship can't be better because we're all working towards the same thing. We all want compliance. We don't want to serve anybody that's underage. It just, you know, when someone makes a small mistake, a minor mistake or whatever, I think that they ought to have the ability to say, "Okay, here's what you did wrong when you did that." I understand there's training, I understand all that, but I think that there should be some other way to do this as opposed to just coming in and getting, and it's kind of the way it's done now is, is that there's, if they come in and everything works out fine, you don't even know that they came in, other than somebody comes back and says, "There was a weird person that did," like, "Somebody come in and asked for a beer and I, and they weren't 21," and, you know, that was, and so then you're just, you're out there. You don't even know that they came. But if they do come, and they do, it's kind of like a, "We got you." And then this is, this is going to be your consequence because we got you. And it's, whether we train them or not, if they make a mistake, a small mistake, then we're on the hook, so. It, it, it's just frustrating from time to time, but certainly with the fact that this has been the third time in five years. Now, I wasn't involved with the first one, but these last two I have been involved with, and both of them have been fairly frustrating from the standpoint of how it took place. So, that's all I have.
Madam Chair.
That's a, that's a yes, sir? That's a yes?
Yeah, I have a problem training.
Okay.
Madam Chair, could we perhaps hear from the sheriff since there were some allegations made about if this is legal and that, and how the sheriff's department approaches this because I assume that our sheriff's department is operating under the scope of the law.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Halderson, so in reading the report, the detective Ryan Fitzgerald briefs the underage person that when you go in and you order something, you cannot lie, you must present your driver's license when that's asked for, and if they ask you how old you are, you must tell them the truth. So, in terms of deception allegation, I'm not quite there, and I will clear the record that subsequent to my last trip to the podium, they actually failed in 18, 19, we did not have compliance checks in 20, and then we, they failed again in 21. So, three out of four is what actually happened. And I think Mr. Fisher's that kid, he wasn't there for the 18 one. So, yeah, it's hard to hear that they don't trust us because I think we have a really good relationship in the county with our constituency, but I understand the frustration because I too am after compliance. And I don't know what's done in the compliance training. I've never been through it, but I could sure get somebody here in a few minutes to tell you the whole story if you'd like.
Madam Chair, may I also ask, with regard to deception, my memory is that you, that regardless of whether somebody passes or fails compliance, that there is a follow-up with the business to say you were successful, we did a compliance check. Does that happen or is it just a, you, the businesses only hear from the sheriff's department if there's a failure?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Halderson, I'm not quite positive on that. I do know immediately after a failure, there is that confrontation where the deputy will come in from outside and sit with the violator and explain the whole circumstance. I know that. I'm not sure about when you pass, if there's a follow-up to say, "Oh, hey, we were just there," and, "Good job." And then a T-shirt. We don't, you know, everyone loves a T-shirt, so that's really not a bad idea.
That's a great.
And Madam Chair, if that isn't the practice, perhaps, you know, folks could talk about that because there is a sense of transparency. I think that, you know, I don't think anybody wants to, and having worked in the business, I remember, we didn't talk about them like compliance checks, we called them stings, you know, felt, you know. And what I discovered was that those relational aspects of the follow-up, the discussion, the, you know, this is what you did right is also important as much as this is what you did wrong. So, if that is not happening, perhaps that's something that could happen as well to help build relationships because I think that, to your point, nobody wants to, we like to see you guys in uniform, you know, keeping us safe in our communities, and we want people to feel that way as well, so, thank you.
Commissioner Slavik.
Thank you. Question for legal, for our county attorney. Do we have, so, how do we go in and, we've heard the word, and it's been on camera, that the establishment is willing to go through a training process, but we can't put that in the resolution or is it just kind of a check on trust or is there a way to go in, formalize that agreement, that they'll go through the process?
Your authority under the ordinance is to impose a fine or suspension. If you have an agreement with the owner to impose something additional or an alternative, you can document that agreement in the resolution.
But they would not have to abide by that. They could take their, they could do the resolution as it's proposed, and they wouldn't have to abide by it, and there's no reason for them to do that other than just to be partners in the process. Is that correct? One of, I'll look at our county attorney, Keenan.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Slavik, yes, there would be, there would be no recourse if they decided not to undergo the training or provide the training because it's not a recognized sanction, even if they agree to it. And so, really where the training comes in is if they want to fall under one of the, you know, the other category that you have in the ordinance, a best practices business, that training, they would get points towards being a best practices business for doing the training.
Thank you, county attorney. I'm going to mess this up and add some mud to the water, and maybe it will fail based on some thoughts on that part in there. But I am wondering if we could somehow form, it sounds like really the requirement we're trying to do is to require them to enroll in the best practice program is really what we're asking them to do, to get enough points to be able to do that. I am wondering if we could possibly go, resolution at stands of proposed at the five days, those five set days of August 20th through 24th, plus the $5 penalty, on the assumption that they do not enroll in best practices, and if they do enroll, we reduce it two days and do August 20th through, that was. that would be August twenty-second. So a three-day. We have the opportunity of up to sixty days. It includes, but, but a three-day is still both of the weekends, which is the busiest time. And to me, it feels like there's offering some sort of an incentive that basically kind of says, "Well, here's your hand if you actually choose to do this." Because signing up for it, not doing it circumstances, I think that if we believe in our best practice program, we should go in and, and, and do it that way. So the way our ordinance, it looks like, I really feel like we need to maybe look at some things differently on, on how to get compliance on best practice program. Because I think that that's the way to do this. And, and having almost a mandated requirement of after X situations, you should do that. Because I, I think that that really does go in and, and address many of our problems is, is that part in there. So I, I guess I don't know. I'm going to put it out as an amendment, and we'll see if it dies on, on this. But the resolution before us goes with a staff recommendation of five days and the five hundred dollars based on that. And it, and I'm going to see if there'll be a, a second on an amendment to at least have discussion on offering some sort of an incentive to be able to be enrolled in best practices, which would be a reduction from five days to three days. So I'll, I'll make that as a motion to see if there is a second.
You have a motion to amend the resolution? Is there a second?
For discussion or anything else?
Dies for lack of a second.
Dies for lack of a second, okay, I tried.
Yes, Commissioner.
To this point, I think we've set a precedent with other businesses in five days. I'm looking for affirmation from Teresa. I know we sanctioned, I don't know if it was this business or another one.
Pretty much in the fall when nobody was there, yes.
But we did, it was this, the business that we did before. So this is the only business we've ever suspended in the last eight years? We've set a precedence of five days, correct? So I, I mean, I don't want to belabor this either, but because other businesses got five days, I wasn't willing to second your motion. I would be more than happy to double the five days to ten with a failure to participate in the best practices by a certain date. So you give them five in August, give them a year to get their training and stuff done. And if they don't, then they can do another five years in twenty-three. Please. All right. In twenty-three days.
We're, we're struggling here a little bit with this because I think that.
I'm not going to let them off easy because we already set the precedent.
This, this particular organization hasn't come to us the way we usually get. When people are in this situation, they take responsibility for it and they tell us what they're going to do differently to make it happen. I'm not hearing that here. And I think part of the problem is that, you know, this is a consequence. It is a penalty. But I don't, I don't see you accepting it as, as that. You're, you're, you're kind of, well, excuse me for saying this. You're kind of whining about it instead of taking responsibility and doing something about it. You need to empower your employees to say no. You need to empower them to say, "Nope, I cannot serve you." You're, you're, you've got it upside down, backwards, left whatever license plate that says you're under twenty-one and I'm not going to serve you. I don't think you've empowered your employees to say that. You also don't seem to want to, you've talked about the training. You said, "Yeah, we're going to do training." You do it through Anheuser-Busch or some other organization. But I think you also said not every one of your employees has gone through the training. You mentioned you think they all went through, but there might be one that didn't. So, you know, okay, so what are you doing to make sure that that employee gets trained? And I also am hearing just kind of, "Yeah, we have a reader, but it doesn't work all the time." I don't hear you saying, "We're going to do something to improve our, our internet or get a different reader or, you know, provide the Wi-Fi that makes it work." You, you're not taking and moving it to the next step to make this something that is not going to happen again. I mean, the whole idea of this is to get you to understand this, this is a problem if your employees are serving underaged youth. And what are you going to do to make sure that that doesn't happen next week?
So for starters, we are actually, I'm getting texts right now from my other guy that's working for me this morning that we're, we're getting new internet service installed.
Okay, now you should have kind of come up front with that.
Well, I didn't know how relevant it was. Those are, they're, we're always trying to improve. Everything we do, we're trying to improve. The, the people that we have work for us. We take them through. We show them everything. We show them every day as much as we possibly can. I've actually even, I didn't even mention it earlier, but I've imposed a two-hundred-dollar bonus for anybody that catches somebody that's underage for, for trying. And all they got to do is catch somebody that's, that's trying to get served, that's, that's underage. If, we're, we're always trying to get better all the time. I don't know really how to explain it other than that. The things that we're doing are, yeah, we're doing training. And, and yes, I, he, he's talked to me about, he, and actually, it's funny, just as a, a prop to the sheriff, he called me last Friday and talked to me about some of my concerns. And we had a nice, long conversation, and he was incredibly nice. And we came up with a couple of, of solutions. He talked to me again yesterday, called me on the phone. And it's the first time I felt like someone was actually trying to understand what, what kind of problems we're having. And so he's talked to me about training as well, which after talking to him more and more, I'm certainly more willing to start using the sheriff's department as a training tool. Our College City Beverage offers it to us, and they come to us. So they, they are one that can come to us. Plus, last year, we did it all online with them. But, you know, training is, is, yeah, it's, it's a huge part of it. But ultimately, at the, at the, the whole of it is, is we're a golf course. We're not, we're not a bar. We're not a place where people go to just sit there and drink. We just, that's just not what we are. So the bar is almost a secondary part. It's a big part of it because people go to play golf and they want to have drinks while they're playing. But it's not as much of the revenue, it's not the biggest part of what's on our mind ninety percent of the time is, is not the bar. But we do have, I do have a new manager that I've, I've started that's taken over, kind of running the restaurant side. And we have had many extensive conversations about the importance of a training for the kids. And then he's talking about doing the training himself here at some point. I don't know when the next one would be.
And I, I appreciate that. That's, that's, that's the better way to, to handle this. Because I don't want to see you in here again next week, next year.
I don't ever want to come back here again.
I'm sure you're a great guy. But this isn't something you want to be here for.
No, I'm a golf professional.
We don't want to be suspending your license and, and taking away your revenue and, and causing all those kinds of issues, you know, in order to get your attention to doing what needs to be done. And it sounds like you're, you're committing to doing better and more training of all your employees. And it sounds like you're working on the reader, which is, which is, as Commissioner Slavik said, and I've seen from other bar operations, that that really makes a difference to be able to just put the license in and let the machine tell you good or not good.
Yeah, we've got a whole new system being put in here very soon.
That, that is, that's good to hear. Because, you know, we're, we're just, the whole process is to get your attention on this part of your operation. And maybe it's not the most important part of the operation, but it's something that needs your attention in order to make sure that you're not back here again next year.
Yeah, well, believe me, I don't want to be.
All right, all right, thank you. As it stands now, we have a motion on the floor, which discusses, Commissioner Atkins, do you want to?
I just had one, one last comment. I know we want to vote, Madam Chair. That's not lost on me.
That's fine.
But I made the motion. I haven't commented on it. I just put it out there to see where kind of the board was going to be at. And I wanted to acknowledge for Mr. Fisher, I've owned a small business for twenty-five years in South St. Paul. It's hard to run a small business. My wife's worked on a golf course for thirty-two years. Julia's worked indoor on the, on the, the HR side, the front desk side, the, the whole kit and kaboodle. She's worked outside. It's hard. It's, it's a son of a gun to run a golf course, especially with what's been going on. That being said, life is also about actions and consequences. Your track record right now sucks, three out of four. And so the consequences suck. That's a legal term, I think Tom Donnelly taught me. And it pains me to, to do that. It really, it really truly does. I was glad to see that the board was open to moving the dates so that we could accommodate the organization that has the tournament there. And like you, I, I hope I see you on a golf course because I'd love to come down and golf your place. But the substance that you're serving is a deadly one. And it's, the consequences of that aren't just fines. They're that people die. So I appreciate your, your acknowledging the situation. I appreciate the fact that you're making some, you're getting texts this morning saying you're making some improvements. And like I say, I hope you see, I see you on a golf course. I hope we never see one another in this boardroom again. And I wish you the very best with it.
Okay, thank you. Other comments? If not, we do have a motion and a second. I wanted to clarify what is still in the motion.
Madam Chair, I was having the same question. Can we clarify the date for the motion? Otherwise, I believe it is the motion as before you.
The dates are the twentieth through the twenty-fourth. Yes. And what other question?
That's it.
That's it? All right, twentieth.
All we can do.
The suspension will be from August twentieth to August twenty-fourth. All right, seeing no other comments. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hayman Rowland?
Yes.
Commissioner Halderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Holberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Slavik?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaylord?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes. Good luck, and I hope the training goes well. All right, that takes us down to twelve point one. This is out of our public health area. And we're going to have Leah Roberts come up. And we're going to talk about a proclamation of emergency medical services week here in Dakota County.
Yes. Hello, good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Leah Roberts. I am the supervisor for emergency preparedness EMS.
Could we take conversations outside of the chamber so that we can continue our meeting? Teresa, thank you.
All right. Yep, so I am the supervisor for emergency preparedness EMS and community engagement for the public health department. And it's my privilege to give you a little update on our EMS council. So our EMS council, as many of you maybe are aware, was established by this board back in two thousand and three with the intended purpose to advise public health on matters related to the EMS system development and coordination.
I, I asked that the people in the back of the room, would you please take your conversation out of the chamber? Second notice. All right, thank you.
All right. So, yes, so it was intended to advise public health on EMS system development and coordination with the mission to assure that prompt quality and coordinated emergency medical services are provided to the residents of the county. So a little bit about the council. We have our eight ambulance agencies that have primary service areas in the county are voting members as well as there is representation as a representative from our fire chiefs association, police chiefs, and Dakota nine-one-one, as well as our public health director is a voting member. And then we have non-voting members of the public health emergency preparedness coordinator and then the EP coordinator out of the sheriff's office. Like many programs in two thousand and twenty-one, we did not have our typical work plan because of the pandemic, but we did have a few notable achievements, including coordinated, coordinated information and updates with EMS providers on the COVID-nineteen pandemic. I served as liaison to help ensure and, and ask, and answer any questions around transmission, exposure, vaccine, PPE. We hosted vaccine clinics for EMS personnel and other first responders when they came up under prioritization in Phase One A and ensured that they were able to get into our clinics in a timely manner if they did meet that designation. We planned and executed two tactical medical responder training sessions, which are around bleeding control techniques for first responders. And then we utilized paramedics in our first aid rooms at the Metcalf Middle School Vaccination Clinics to great success. In two thousand and twenty-two, we have a more typical work plan, and we're hopeful that we can actually get back to the regular work of the EMS council, which includes participating in the annual full-scale exercise that the county does. We have very, we have varied participation depending on what the event is and what EMS would, the role might be for EMS. We continue to explore ways to integrate EMS in public health. We plan to train a hundred first responders in bleeding control techniques through that tactical medical responder training. We've trained about sixty so far, and we're planning on offering at least two more sessions to first responders. It's a very high in-demand training, which includes all first responder disciplines. And anyone who trains does get a bleeding control kit that they can keep on their response vehicle. And also ensuring, ensuring continued training and development of EMS personnel in Dakota County, including a scholarship to go to different conferences and trainings and that they can apply to with us. Also, we will be recognizing and honoring EMS providers, first responders, and residents who have made exceptional contributions to the EMS system. That will be at our EMS awards, which is on May nineteenth at the Brackett Carcrossing Country Club in Lakeville. And we will be giving three awards on that, at that time, too, to responder organizations and one to a citizen. We haven't announced the awards yet because we haven't notified the winners. So that's why I'm not announcing them at this meeting. We're going to be continuing to explore and implement ways to communicate EMS programs to county residents supporting the county's Adult Detention Alternatives Initiative. We do send an EMS representative to that group. And then finally, celebrating EMS Week, May fifteenth through the twenty-first, which we're asking for a proclamation of that today. And that is all I have. I stand for questions. Do you have any?
Well, thank you very much. Any questions? Emergency medical services is very important.
Yes, it is.
It is something that we do want to recognize. And I have, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, a proclamation. And I'll read the proclamation, and then we'll do a resolution approving the proclamation. So let me just begin by the proclamation itself. Whereas, under Minnesota statutes three seventy-five A point oh four, the Dakota County Board of Commissioners performs the duties[1594.41] statutes 375a.04, the Dakota County Board of Commissioners performs the duties and exercises the powers of a community health board pursuant to the local Public Health Act and has the responsibility to prevent disease and disability and to promote and protect the health and safety of county citizens. And whereas, one of the county's strategic goals is to create a great place to live by improving the health and safety of Dakota County residents. And whereas, by resolution number 03-218, which we did in 2003, the county board established the emergency medical services EMS advisory council's membership structure and advisory role to the Dakota County Public Health Director. And whereas, the mission of the Dakota County EMS Advisory Council is to assure prompt, quality, and coordinated EMS to the citizens of Dakota County by providing a high-quality care through training, community awareness, systems improvement, and assuring best practices. And whereas, the EMS Advisory Council works collaboratively with the public health department to enhance EMS services to Dakota County residents, now therefore be it resolved that the Dakota County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims May 15th through the 21st, 2022, as Emergency Medical Services Week in Dakota County by recognizing the value of emergency medical service providers here in Dakota County. So, that is the resolution, or that is the proclamation. We have a resolution. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved?
Moved by Commissioner Slavik.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Seeing no discussion, clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Helverson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Slavik?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaylord?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayman Rowland?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. With that, we have a request for moving into a closed session to discuss legal strategy regarding a notice of claim. Is there any commissioner that wants to go into, okay?
No.
I do not see anyone that wants to go into a closed session. I'm sorry, my iPad is not working right now. Do we have a resolution on this, Mr. Donnelly?
Madam Chair, no, there is no resolution. It was just guidance on how to handle the settlement and if there's no need for discussion. There's no action for the board.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. That takes us then to inter-agency announcements and reports. Let's start with Association of Minnesota Counties.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nothing new to report outside of the fact that the legislature is in its final weeks. We'll be talking about that in general government. And AMC has some update included in some of the conversation we'll have at our next meeting.
All right, thank you very much. Dakota County Broadbent.
That's Commissioner Workman.
That's Commissioner Workman, who's not here. We'll hold that off. Emergency medical, too many. Metropolitan Emergency Services Board.
Meets next week, Madam.
All right, thank you. Minnesota Inter County Association, that's MICA. They are also continuing to work at the legislature and we'll get some of that update at the next meeting as well. Metropolitan Mosquito Control.
Madam Chair, we met last week and the search is underway for a new executive director because Stephen Manwiler is retiring in September. And so that is actively happening. In spite of all the rain, we are still technically in a light drought in Minnesota and it impacts how much, the actions of the mosquito control board. And so it is, the planning is underway to be in our communities and spraying for mosquitoes and counting larvae. So, it is a way more exciting board than I ever thought it was going to be when I got appointed to it. So, tune in.
Thank you. National Association of Counties, NACO, they're preparing for a conference in Colorado later in the summer. So, any other reports on NACO?
The only other item, Madam Chair, is that if folks want to certain officer roles, either as chairs, vice chairs of any of the individual committees, now is the time to apply.
Your microphone's on. Could everybody hear that? Now is the time to apply for chairs and vice chairs? I didn't have my microphone on. I'm sure my mom who's watching wanted to know that, so.
All right, thank you. Vermillion River Watershed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we did meet last Thursday for our regular April 28th meeting. A couple of things of note in that we ended the year with the audit pretty, in a pretty good, solid situation to the point where we were able to make some budget amendments and do some more feasibility studies. Of course, with our grant funding, a lot of things are not actually funded in terms of actually, does this project make sense and all that? So using some of those excess revenues for that is actually helping us to be able to apply for future grant funding. And then last thing that we have is, we have a new communications person. We have to do an annual report to the Board of Soil and Water and that was very well done. And we did get to see that and accept that. So, nothing else further from the Vermillion.
All right, thank you. Workforce Development.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You're not going to want to miss the Employers of Excellence Awards Breakfast, which is May the 25th. We will have Jerry Hefner, who will give his expert insights on recruiting and retention in a fully employed market. And Hefner is the president of the Personnel Dynamics Consulting, and he will share the results of not only our Employers of Excellence survey, which each business is capable, is able to do online and get some really important feedback about their company. But he will also share what employers are implementing around the country. The workplace has changed and employers need to change as well. And this year's event is May the 25th. It's going to be in Prior Lake at Playworks Link Event Center. And the doors open at 7:30 and the program begins at 8:00 and the registration fee is $15. And I want to shout out to Dakota Scott Workforce Development Board, the Scott County Community Development Agency, the Dakota County Community Development Agency, Inver Hills Community College, and Dakota County Technical College for their sponsorship of this event. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for that update. Are there any other announcements or reports?
Madam Chair, just real briefly, Lakeville held its annual Earth Day celebration on Saturday and cleanup. And given the weather, people are given a pass to complete their cleanup chores at a later date if they didn't want to all go out and be saturated. But the thing that was of note is the number of volunteers in Dakota County organizations that were there. We had the WEP, the Wetland, you know, group. We had master recyclers. We had, the sheriff's office was there, Vermillion Watershed. I mean, it was like 80% of the displays and volunteers were in some way associated with Dakota County programs. And I told somebody I took the little recycling test and I only failed one item, which I'm almost embarrassed to admit that Liz has trained us that well over the years after she became the expert recycler. So, and maybe one of the highlights was we were also able to see buckthorn eating goats. So, that was, in the absence of a petting zoo at Earth Day, you have buckthorn eating goats. So, thank you to all across the county. I know a lot of our staff supervised and worked on getting people there for that program. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to all the people that participated in that. That's great. Any other? If not, we'll move to the county manager.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, well, buckthorn eating goats are a very hard act to follow.
It's a hard act.
I'll just, as was mentioned, I'll just make note that in today's agenda also, May 6th is Child Care Provider Appreciation Day, as was mentioned. And obviously, you know, particularly over the past couple of years, that's been a really tough environment for the folks working there. And, you know, we also certainly have a role here at the county in helping to work with providers. So just to note that appreciation. Thank you.
All right. With that, is there anything else to be brought before us this morning? A motion to adjourn would be in order. So moved. We have a motion by Commissioner Hayman Rowland and a second by Commissioner Helverson. Clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Holberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Slavik?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaylord?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayman Rowland?
Yes.
Commissioner Helverson?
Yes.
All right, thank you. We are adjourned.